Good evening, everyone. Se go ani buju endio wachea kuekue. As Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that as an official call to order again, I will ask Madam Deputy if we have a quorum.
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum. All members of council are here at this time with the exception of Councilor Stroud. Joining us from staff, we have Lanny Fertile, Chief Administrative Officer, Paige Agnew, Commissioner of Community Services, Craig DeJardan, Acting Commissioner for Corporate Services, Peter Huguenbos, Commissioner of Business, Environment and Projects, Brad Joyce, Commissioner of Transportation and Public Works, Desiree Kennedy, CFO and City Treasurer, John Bolignone, City Clerk, Jeff Bumstead, Chief Information Officer, Brandon Forrest, Director of Business, Real Estate and Environment, Jenna Morley, Director of Legal Services and City Solicitor, Ruth Nordograph, Director of Housing and Social Services, Tim Park, Director of Planning Services, Colin Wellington, Director of Arts and Culture. Me help myself, Janet James, Deputy City Clerk. Ian Sullivan is our meeting host and Colin Taylor is providing technical support. From the public, we will be receiving delegations from Mary Farrar and a briefing from Dr. Peter O'Glasa. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So we were a meeting committee, the whole closed meeting. We did discuss one item with respect to an occupational health and safety act matter. So I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Hill. The council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
All favor. Post. And that's carry. Okay, next, we have the approval of the addits. We have an additional delegation, a briefing. We have a report from the Integrity Commissioner's Selection Panel. We had some communications and then also a motion of condolence. Have a mover and a seconder for the addits, please. Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Kylie. All those in favor? Post. And that's carry. Okay, moving on, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? That's a bone.
Chipping through you, I, Ryan Mo, of the Council of Corporations, City of Kingston, the primary pecuniary interest in the matter of clause three, report zero one, as simple utilities Kingston may be received that have a conflict with this aim and so far as it relates to abilities Kingston reference report two twenty one zero one one.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other disclosures of pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing that, then we will continue on. We do have a presentation this evening. It's my pleasure to present this year's Mayor's Arts Awards. So at an event last night, we recognized the 2021 recipients of the Mayor's Arts Awards. Now, in its fifth year, the Mayor's Arts Awards is an annual program that celebrates artistic achievement and recognizes extraordinary contributions in and to the arts. The continuation of this important program during this pandemic time recognizes the value of the arts and the cultural vitality and civic identity of Kingston. This program, the city affirms the value of the arts and city life and nurtures and inspires sustained development of the cultural sector with benefit of all citizens. The 2021 Mayor's Arts Award winners are being formally recognized, of course, at tonight's city council meeting. So first are the Creator Awards. So the Creator Award is a cash prize of $2,500, an award and a certificate that recognizes living artists, artistic collectives, or arts organizations. So there were three Creator Awards that were given out this year to honor artistic merit and our innovation that advances the arts in the city, contributes to the development of the art form, and expresses the cultural vitality of Kingston. So the 2021 recipients, the first recipient is Kingston. Theodore Kingston is the city's longest standing professional theater company that under the successive leadership of Paul Gellino, Catherine McKay, Catherine Maru, Craig Walker, Kim Renders, Brett Christopher, and currently Rosemary Doyle, has brought consistently innovative work to Kingston and the larger region. Picturing a mixture of modern and classical plays, including many new works developed by the company for world premieres in Kingston, the company now embarks on its thirtieth season with a strong mandate to continue its outreach to all audiences and its goal to foster and develop local artists. Theodore Kingston's focus on giving a creative voice to all members of the community, both onstage and through its education programs, reinforces its ongoing status as an important regional arts leader. The second Creator Award goes to Marnie McDermott, who is a self-taught ceramic artist who maintains an active studio practice in Kingston. Her one-of-a-kind slab-built pieces are lively and dynamic and known for their whimsical depictions of plant life. Working with porcelain to create both functional and non-functional work, Marnie treats the surface of each piece like a canvas, illustrating her playful and lively relationship with ecological subject matter. In addition to her ceramic practice, Marnie supports craft communities through her involvement in the Kingston Potter's Guild and the Fat Goose Collective. She's a member of DARN, the Kingston Downtown Action Revitalization Network, and is the founder of Kingston's First Sitting Troop. As an artist, an activist, she seeks to elicit moments of exploration, play, and hopefulness. And then finally, our third Creator Award goes to Ricky Brandt, who is a composer, multi-instrumentalist, and performer here in Kingston. Over the last several years, Ricky has left his fingerprints on a wide variety of projects in the community, ranging in style from rock and psychedelia to funk and electronic dance. A self-taught guitarist and keyboardist, Ricky has always separated himself from the crowd. Today, Ricky applies his talent and ear to Kekal, a project that sees imparting the power and groove of the seventies funk music as new and exciting in the local community. The next category of award is the Arts Champion Award. The Arts Champion Award is an award and certificate that recognizes a living individual, organization, or corporation, making an extraordinary leading contribution to the arts in Kingston as a volunteer, advocate, supporter, sponsor, and/or philanthropist. The 2021 recipient is Catherine Porter. Catherine Porter is a practicing professional artist who brings a lifetime of experience and skills in the fields of art and business. In 1998, Catherine opened the Hart School of Smiles, an accessible center focused on teaching creative arts to other people with disabilities and provide resources and learning opportunities to adults. Hart Center grew from there, publishing their first book in 2006, establishing a post-secondary education initiative at Queens University, and the Able Artist Series was established. Twenty thirteen, Catherine acquired a new space and raised the funds to create The Box, an affordable, accessible work and performance space for anyone facing barriers to finding a space in which to create. Since then, Catherine has established the Hart Accessible Arts Program, which sends artists into long-term care homes, has created an inclusivity guide and mixed ability training program, introduced dance and media arts to the programs at Hart Center, and navigated a pandemic by offering online learning to their participants. Most recently, Catherine has acquired another space and plans to offer residencies to professional working in the disability arts. And then finally, the last category of award is the Limestone Arts Legacy Award. So the Limestone Arts Legacy Award is an award and certificate that recognizes individuals from the past who sustain substantial contributions and built the artistic vitality of the city, nurturing and enabling forms of creation, participation, presentation, and enjoyment, whose leadership has inspired others and whose influence has been felt in the region and beyond. The 2021 recipient is Wally High. Wally High was a Kingstonian, born and raised, and had a dedicated following in Kingston and all over North America as a talented musician, actor, and entrepreneur. His drive to share his love of music led him to create the Joe Shittillan Memorial Musical Instrument, Learning Library, now known as Joe's Mill, the first of its kind, in honor of his late friend. In 2001, Wally secured the first official location for Joe's Mill in the basement of the repurposed Robert Meek Building. While Wally championed the search for an increasingly impressive inventory of musical instruments for the community to borrow, to learn, and enjoy, a board of directors registered the organization as a charity, hired staff, and began to make community partnerships. Without Wally High's tireless passion for nearly a decade to make the expiration of musical instruments accessible to one and all, the community would not have Joe's Mill, now a thriving organization at its permanent home in the TET Center for Creativity and Learning. Learning Library has over 1,100 instruments to borrow. Cities nationwide have been inspired by its success to create for their own communities. Wally is remembered for pursuing his dreams to bring the community together through music in a number of meaningful ways, and the city is grateful for his contributions and legacy. So with that, again, a hearty congratulations for myself on behalf of all of state council to this year's winners of the Mayor's Awards. Congratulations and thank you for your amazing contributions. Okay, so with that, we'll move on in our agenda. Next up, our delegations. We do have one delegation this evening. We will at this time invite Mary Farrar, who will appear before council to speak to clause four or report number two from the CAO with respect to the update on proposed Kingston Inner Harbor cleanup project. Ms. Farrar? Just looking to see if you're there on my screen. Do believe that she's here. Hey, we seem to be having some technical difficulties with the delegation. So I think with the consent of council, maybe we'll move on to our briefing and then we can try to get in the delegation afterwards. Okay, and just please remind me if I forget to circle back. I just raised a point of work. I'll try to make a note in my agenda here. Okay, so at this point, then we'll move to our briefing. This evening, we will at this time invite Dr. Peter O'Glasa, Medical Officer of Health for KFLNA Public Health, to brief council with respect to COVID-19 in the KFLNA area. Dr. O'Glasa?
Welcome.
Yes, hello. Yes, welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm just starting my video stream. To your Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for inviting me tonight to speak to the council. I'm joined today by our Board Chair, Mayor Dennis Doyle, and the Vice Chair, Mr. Wes Garrett, who are, I believe, are in attendance, although I don't see them on my screen right now. I'll start my presentation with providing your general update to what the situation has been recently and go over some of the implications and actions taken so far. If I may have the next slide, please. So the main thing to to acknowledge here is that we are seeing an unprecedented rise in cases. These cases are spreading among the population. That's predominantly those who are unvaccinated, those who are not yet eligible to be immunized. But also, we see breakthrough cases among those fully immunized. This spread is unfortunately consistent with the anticipated progression of the fourth wave of COVID-19. And in response to this pandemic, it's important to establish what the goals are of this response. Our two main goals of pandemic response in the KFLA region is to keep schools and workplaces open and maintain healthcare capacity. And it is these two goals that decide and drive the interventions as well as measures and actions that we are all taking. Our current drivers of COVID-19 spread in this regions in this region are continue to be the spread in the households and in small clusters that are associated often with social gatherings. So the close contact in a household setting continues to be the main driver. As a matter of fact, since last briefing that I provided to the Board of Health in November, that proportion of cases attributed to household spread has since increased, and now it's over 50%. We currently have, as of today, we have 389 active cases, which is an all-time high, as well as we reported 88 new cases. And we're currently at 129.5 cases per 100,000 per week, which is our new peak. Our percent positivity continues to be high, and it is at 2.69%, with 3% of the population being tested in a week. I mentioned earlier that the transmission occurs in those settings. And for household settings, it's always a question of our investigations to where the households are getting COVID-19 introduced into the family, into people residing in that household. And one of the largest proportion of those is unknown, but also some are driven by already declared outbreaks, and our case numbers are also increased and driven by cases linked to the outbreaks. And what's significant about these outbreaks and clusters of cases is that in the vast majority of all of these circumstances, there is a case symptomatic person present in that social setting, in that gathering, whether it's an outbreak setting, workplace, workplace, school, or household, it is the spread comes from an infected individual being present. And with this, I would, I'd like to move to the next slide and talk about some of the local requirements that are currently implemented above and beyond what's required in the province under step three. We have a section 22 order that limits the size of the indoor social gatherings and private dwellings, and that's specifically intended to reduce the risk of congregations in the setting of the highest, of the highest risk. We've implemented increased screening in schools, and that's something that resulted in significant uptake in testing among the school age population, which also now has a very good testing rate. It's one in 10 children a week of all children in KFLA region getting tested. So that's a much three times higher rate than the general population. And that helps us to achieve that goal of detecting cases early, detecting transmission, implement measures such as isolation of cases contacts, and keep schools open for in-person learning for other students who are able to participate. We've also introduced other measures along the measures brought by the province to incentivize immunization uptake. I will speak later about this. And this is also something that came out over and over again today as part of the Science Table briefing that was just released today, that vaccines do work. They do show effectiveness, and they do change the situation in this fourth wave compared to everything we've experienced so far. It is because of the vaccines that we can keep the workplaces and schools open. And it is because of the vaccine at this point that our hospital capacity, even though significantly stretched in the KFLA region, remains in much better shape during this fourth wave than compared to the previous ones. So some of the examples of the measures that are used locally to increase that immunization uptake are the letters of instructions that are intended to close some of the gaps in provincial requirements that were identified in the indoor organized sports settings involving adults, coaches, volunteers, but also children 12 years of age and older. We've also provided local recommendations for businesses. We are working proactively with businesses and the business community to provide recommendations that are going to protect those most vulnerable ones who are at most risk of severe COVID and reduce the risk of transmission overall. And examples of some of these measures include recommending available service for curbside pickup, delivery, encourage staying home when sick for employees, provide options for working from home if feasible, and encourage employers to participate, and employees to participate in the provincial antigen screening programs, which is a part of enhanced screening. And next slide, please. Some of the future areas and avenues for additional proactive measures have to do with what we've seen in terms of spread, what we see in terms of drivers of transmission. And this is where we work with the Office of the Chief Medical Office of Health, and we're looking at these additional requirements and proactive measures to address some of these risk factors in disease transmission. So more details to come on that. But these measures are going to be around the masking and more thorough or more detailed screening to prevent those who are symptomatic from entering and potentially infecting others. And one also point here that comes up as a question over and over again is that a lot of members of the public are wondering, when are we going to see restrictions similar to those that were implemented in previous waves? In KFLA, we are following the science. We are following the most appropriate and use most appropriate measures to address the local spread, but also recognize that some of these broad measures that were saving us in the previous waves are not applicable to a situation where vast majority of the populations are immunized, and they're also not going to address the patterns of spread that we see. I've already mentioned the pattern of spread that we see in small clusters, spread among the small clusters in among people who are each other's close contacts. Those individuals will be just as likely to transmit to one another, whether there is a capacity limit imposed or not. In settings that are subject to proof of vaccination requirements, if you think of a typical interactions that are happening in those settings, there's groups of friends coming and spending time together. They might be gathering at homes, and that's where we have the 10 capacity limit. They might be coming to places that are subject to proof of vaccination. And these are the individuals that are at risk of transmitting to one another. And that's why these broad, broad measures that are very indiscriminate are not going to address that risk of spread, that risk of spread in small counters, in small clusters. We see among highly vaccinated populations, even if we see outbreaks. These outbreaks are usually very, very quickly limiting, and they're mostly related to very close circle of people that are each other contact. Sometimes they might be each other contact also from outside of that setting. And that's why at this point, with the information that we have currently and the evidence from spread, these broad restrictions would not address the risk and would have unintended harms. Going back to the overarching goals of pandemic management here, we want to keep schools open, we want to keep the workplaces open, and we also want to recognize that individuals who are fully vaccinated are far less risk of getting sick, are far less risk of transmitting to others. And we have not seen a significant burden of infection and transmission coming from places where proof of vaccination is in effect. May I have the next slide, please? So this map of Ontario indicates areas of increased COVID activity, and we see that eastern Ontario has a KFL region in the darker blue, darker to blue, the higher case counts and incidence rates. And we certainly see the health units on the map of Ontario with similar dark shades of blue. We do see that also in other neighboring communities. We see that to the west of us, increases happening in Hastings, Prince Edward. We see that in parts of southern and western Ontario as well. Next slide, please. When you look at the regions with the highest COVID-19 activity, unfortunately, we are we are in that top three with KFLA being just below Algoma and as well as Sudbury. They rates are higher than ours, but it is concerning that there's many health units that are in a very similar or even worse position. Among those health units, though, with higher COVID-19 activity, our community is the one with one of the lowest percent positivity. And the significance of that is that people of KFLA region are responding to the recommendations to get tested when symptomatic. And we see a lot of people getting tested in this region, and that's what drives that percent positivity rate down. This is one element, one part of the recommendations that we have from public health that we see clear evidence of people from this region following very diligently. Next slide, please. This next slide is probably one of the most profound visual representation of what the situation is across the province. And this is a series of bar graphs that are showing two different colors. Red represents those who are unvaccinated, and green represents those who are fully vaccinated. Yellow is the partial vaccination status. And these graphs, the first one on the top left shows the number of vaccinated Ontarians by age group. So we go from zero to 11. This is an older graph, so it doesn't have that five to 11 pulled out from there. But vast majority of Ontarians are fully immunized. And that shows when we look at cases. When the next bar graph to the right shows cases per 100,000, and that's the infection rate. So here, most predominantly, the infections are driven by those who are not vaccinated. It's a very small proportion in many of these bars of green, but that's a very, very small, small portion. This might still be a large number of people, because we're talking here about millions of Ontarians. But that risk of being a case, being infected with COVID-19, is significantly decreased by getting vaccinated. And that's what our message is, continues to be continued immunized. That message is even strengthened, it's strengthened even more when you look at hospitalization rate. And I've shown this slide before, but that continues to be the case. You see a small portion of the unvaccinated ones contributing to that hospitalization per 100,000 in the 80-plus population. You'll see some small signal in other age groups, too. These are individuals who are very vulnerable. They typically have medical conditions. They have poor health to begin with. And sometimes sadly, despite of that fully immunized status, they do get sick to the point that they need to be hospitalized. But this is not the risk for any member of any, most people in our community. Sadly, we do have those who are at that increased risk, and these are the ones we need to protect. When you look at the bottom row, there is ICU admissions per 100,000. Even more profound difference between those vaccinated are vaccinated being even more severely sick and ending up in the ICU. And sadly, deaths very, very strongly overrepresented by those older adults, 80 and above, and also mostly unvaccinated. There are deaths sadly, unfortunately, among those who are maybe fully vaccinated, younger individuals. But they're very few, and they do not represent the average risk in this community or anywhere in Ontario. Unfortunately, some individuals, because of their health conditions, will have these poor outcomes of COVID-19. We need to protect them. We need to do our best to make sure that there is that hospital capacity for those who need to be hospitalized, admitted to ICU. But we are doing that by getting vaccinated ourselves, and But we are doing that by getting vaccinated ourselves and over ninety percent, ninety ninety two point four percent of individuals in our community over the age of twelve have received that first dose of vaccination, eighty nine point one are already fully vaccinated. So thank you to the community for for following that science and and doing the right thing, getting immunized. Next slide please. We see a case rate over the over the course of this pandemic, and these these case rates represent the number of cases, new cases per hundred thousand population per week. And we see clear on this graph from from March twenty twenty when pandemic was declared till November till December sixth of twenty twenty one, we see these waves happening and and clearly once again, our case rate per hundred thousand is is now surpassed what we what we've seen in previous waves. I did meant next slide please. Thank you. Our vaccination status K F L A already mentioned the 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 really high numbers. And and this breakdown here on the right hand side shows the distribution between the distribution of vaccine or vaccination rate among different age groups. And we do see that that some of these numbers in uptick is really high. I sometimes I get a question why the number for eighty and plus sometimes can be over hundred percent, and that's because we underestimated the population. And that's that has to do with denominators, but overall, we see a very strong uptick among twelve to seventeen. That's a that's a really excellent, excellent group. And what's of note, and I'll I'll mention that in the in the next slide, I'll talk about that is the is the significant uptick we have among the five to eleven in just days from this vaccine being being available. So next slide please. It's it's absolutely amazing to see the response we get from parents with almost one third of those who are five to eleven already receiving their first dose in the K F L region. And then we have the second highest rate of vaccination in this age group in the province. This is something that that's something that's going to get us through this. And when you look at the, I don't I don't have these slides, a part of my presentation, the the presentation from the science table came out later this afternoon after the deadline for submission of this presentation. But you see the some of the projections of the science table include some of these very sort of best case scenarios of what the what the pandemic is going to look like in the months to come. And some of these assumptions include things like goals of getting immunizations to that five to eleven age group fairly quickly in December, and we are already at that level. So that's that's really, that's really going to help us achieve these goals that that I stated earlier of keeping schools open, reducing and schools workplaces open as well as preserving the the hospital capacity. Even though these that population is not going to is not likely to get severely sick and need hospitalizations, but increasing immunization uptake among five to eleven is going to help address that one pattern of spread when we see when there's an outbreak and in a school, for example, and the child transmits to other household members, increasing the case count. So that's that's something that that we are addressing at this moment. And thank you to every single parent who made the decision to either already immunize their children or booked an appointment. These appointments continue to be available. And I encourage everyone in this community to take advantage of of the vaccine that we have now for five to eleven population. Next slide please. So with that in mind, our messages continue to remain the same. This is an over and over the same message, the same message came up from the science table today. The review of new evidence, the the overlook, looking at 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 the situation, the province confirms that vaccine is our single most effective interventions here. And that's what a lot of people have done in this community and more are getting vaccinated, especially among those newly eligible populations who continue to get vaccinated remains remains really a really important message. And looking at the patterns of spread that we see around in community, in our community, it is a combination of changing the culture that would would make it acceptable for people not to join social interactions if they don't feel well, if they're sick. Not dismiss symptoms as a sign of allergies or a cold. I've mentioned that earlier, that at this point in this pandemic, there's no such thing as common cold and people who are vaccinated or people in 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 general, they may experience COVID in a very, a very mild way, but it will add to transmission if they choose to go out and interact with others. That's something that is is really key of of curtailing the spread at this point. And that active screening that we've implemented in the school settings, that active screening needs to be embraced in all other settings in in this community where where people will will be watching, monitoring their own symptoms and then and then deciding to stay home, seek testing if if they're symptomatic. All additional measures such as keeping a distance, wearing face covering, washing hands will add on to that level of protection will be additional preventive measures. But the the key two messages here is to get vaccinated and stay home when sick. That's what's going to change the the likelihood, change the the rate at which this virus is spreading. I've mentioned earlier, it's already evidence of widespread community of 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 widespread community spread of COVID nineteen and we, in order to break that chain of transmission, we need to follow these measures. These are not new measures. They are hard ones to 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 follow, but I believe we can do it. And next slide please. That's the that's the overarching message. We've we've done remarkably well as a community throughout this pandemic. The previous waves were were really hard on everyone. There were some unprecedented measures implemented. And they were implemented for good reason at that time. At this point in time, the main measure that's going to make the most impact on the health of our community, on the spread, that's going to allow us to keep schools workplaces open and preserve that hospital critical he- health infrastructure capacity is is to do things that we've been doing. Many of us have been doing that already. Ninety over ninety percent of people already got first dose of vaccine and more are getting vaccinated. But in addition to that, we also need to be very diligent in terms of watching for our symptoms and staying home when sick. That's going to be the message. That's that that's that is the message. That is the message and any any additional measures, proactive measures that we will be introducing, I'll be introducing, working with the chief medical officer, health and and our colleagues from the ministry are going to be to make that make the environment that that's supportive of these of these of these daily choices. And with that, I'll turn to questions.
Hey, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council?
Here, Rashid and through you, thank your doc. Thank you, Dr. Oglaza there for that update. I'm sure you're hearing from the community just how frustrated they are right now with how well we did in previous waves and we might be victims of our own success because that natural immunity might not necessarily be there for those who are not vaccinated yet. So with that in mind, other health units right now are already bringing in more harsh methods, like more harsh measures, sorry, like capacity limits and other restrictions and basically saying, go back to to remote work. So my question, I guess, is we have capacity in private residences right now restricted and people are this. Personally, I I struggle with that when you can go out to a business and have a hundred and fifty five people that are I'm hearing a lot of chatter from that with the community. So we have about two weeks from when any restrictions are put in place and we start to see results. So if we were to have more restrictions right now from your office, we might be able to save Christmas because the result will start around the twenty first of December. So with that in mind, are are there other restrictions coming or are we basically talking about canceling Christmas this year? Are we wait to see? And then possibly just have even further restrictions for Christmas. That's that's a lot of the feedback I'm getting from you. You want the harsher measures now to save Christmas. So is, did you comment on this?
Yes, certainly. Through Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question. I I do hear these voices and and comments coming from the community. Probably one of the one of the best or or explanation that I that I that I find most most telling is is looking at the the pattern of spread. Household for household spread and and spread in in this type of unstructured setting does drive our transmission here. We see a significant spread or signal transmission happening from from locations where populations are highly immunized and 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 public health measures are followed. So that makes it makes it more challenging to to impose broad capacity restrictions on on types of activities that are not driving the spread. What what we will be, what what I'm looking at in terms of in terms of measures is to is to look at what what are the drivers or spread. And I already alluded to the fact that our clusters and outbreaks are driven by symptomatic individuals present. These individuals, if they are present in the social gathering, but it's a household or or another setting, they they have they have a potential of spreading it to others. So 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 if it's a workplace, if it's if it's a business, if it's a private residence, encouraging everyone to to screen and and not enter, not not engage in these interactions if they're symptomatic, it's going to have the most most impact. And this is one of the hardest measure to to put into an order because we can make an order that will limit capacity in in settings that are not driving the spread. But even with that limited capacity, this order or any order is not going to stop necessarily individuals coming in who are symptomatic and 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 spreading the virus to their close circle friends. We can add measures such as increased screening and we are doing that already in some of the settings like schools and looking at options for options for expanding that to other settings as well. But ultimately, it it will be up to the individuals who are subject to those who are doing the screening themselves to to really look into. Are they are they recognizing symptoms for what they are? Are they rationalizing, minimizing and and still choosing to go in? So that's that's the challenge in terms of applying interventions, the broad capacity restrictions will be less effective in in addressing what we see right now in terms of spread in a situation where the vast majority of the population are immunized.
Okay, thank you for that. So just a follow up question then. I mean, ultimately, if these capacity restrictions are facing, as you say, the transmissions happening in small groups of ten or less. And shouldn't we see the numbers going and yet it feels and I can sense the community's frustration that in contrast to previous waves and with all the measures previously, the numbers continue to rise. And so I think at this point, from the feedback coming constituents is is they feel like we're taking half measures at this point. And you know, as the numbers continue to rise, that they're expecting tangible, visible action. They just don't feel like that's actually occurring. I mean, I don't know how else to to portray it to you, but I mean, in the fourth wave, our numbers are worse than they've ever been. And everybody has done what they were, vast majority of people did what they were supposed to do. So so I guess with that being in mind, are you considering, I'll just state as directly as possible, are you considering other measures like implementing remote working? Capacity limits in our ICU capacity, are we going to be, you know, borrowing ICU capacity from other places in the province? And then just sort of taking a watch and approach, or are we ready to put some of these other measures in place to get through this this quest?
Yes, we are. And thank you through Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for that question. It is it is absolutely critical that the two goals of this pandemic are followed and 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 actions taken are in 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 the effort to to maintain that open workplaces and schools for in-person learning as well as hospital capacity. As far as remote work, that's something that we've already recommended to the business community that whenever possible, that's that's a recommendation. And there's a difference between what's what's possible feasible and and mandating it. The the one, probably one of the most successful, successful ways of 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 stopping the chain of transmission is something that I don't believe that anyone in this community is 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 willing to accept. And we've seen that before. We've seen a stay at home order. That's the only reassured way that's that's going to prevent the spread on the leaving home for an unessential reason. This is not where we are in this pandemic. We are past the point where we can implement stay at home orders for for many reasons. One of them is that each time the stay at home order was was implemented, we see perhaps a a smaller uptake. And and it's a hard one to enforce. It raises significant concerns and and significant opposition. So that's one. And two, it is it has a number of unintended negative consequences. Anytime when we are looking at at measures, we have to have a proportional approach to what that measure is going to achieve versus what are the unintended consequences of implementing. And to give an example is 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 something that we we've seen a lot of if we do something to 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 that effect, that that's severe, it would have to be for for a good reason. So if we see hospital capacity completely overrun, if we see or not even overrun, but on that path and trajectory to being overrun, not just in this region, but also in the province. That might be a consideration to do some some additional measures. But this point, we know that the harms, some of the harms of 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 these measures, they, first of all, they're disproportionately impacting those who are most vulnerable. Someone who has a a good job and 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 is able to do remote work, they're probably not going to see a huge impact of 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 such order. There are the ones who we see nationwide that that's that's where people start saving money because because of of the pattern of 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 what they've been experiencing. But others who rely on that in-person work cannot be cannot be working from home and they're not going to be able to to really do well under these circumstances. So they're disproportionately bearing the the consequences of of some of these really harsh measures. So anytime these measures have been contemplated, that had had to be a consideration. That was a consideration. And in this situation, when we have a a large number of cases coming in this in this region, we also have to look at what is the what is the severity of these cases, where the cases come from, what is the pattern of transmission, but also are we looking at at increased case counts or are we also looking at increased case counts with significant severity? And I've seen numbers, I've talked to our colleagues from from acute care and all that. The situation is is the healthcare is fairly stretched in terms of in terms of in terms of capacity, but that's not that that's not the the picture across the province. And in our in our community, we are we are wanting that capacity very closely. When it comes to the point where if you had a non-COVID or any other health issue and you would not be able to get care in in Kingston because the hospital is packed and we have to start transferring people to other parts of the province. Well, this is the time where we we may look at 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 non-essential activities and 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 basically reducing any non-essential activity. And that's not just because of COVID. That's because of the, if you're, if you have, if your local hospital is full and and you need to go to to another part of the province, if you if you fall down skating and 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 break your arm, well, this is the time to stay home and not to go out skating, even though it's part of our life and 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 part of our daily activity. So that's, these are the circumstances where I see that some of these drastic measures might need to be taken when we are down that trajectory, but we're not there yet. We we still have hospital capacity is being stretched. There's some measures that we can take that I know a lot of members of the public views them as as not not strong enough, but they're the ones, they are the measures that are addressing the patterns of of spread that we see in this community. We are following the science, we are following the evidence that we have, and we know the vaccine is truly providing that 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 huge impact on on what they on, on what the eh, outcomes are of those who are infected. So we may have a lot case, a lot of cases, but if there are mild cases, they will recover, they will not add to the hospital burden, will keep them away from school, away from workplaces, and, and the commu- that the community and the society will continue moving on. We will not be shutting down this essential function. That's really the goal of this pandemic. That's what it's stake here is to, how can we, how can we mitigate the impact of COVID and protect those, those most vulnerable without shutting everything down? And, and, and the shutdown, I, I, I don't believe that we are at the point where that shutdown is justified.
Thanks. That seems very reactive, not proactive for example.
So, Councillor, do you have another question? I'm just looking at our time here.
Uh, yeah, well, I, I guess my other question would be, you know, eh, based on what you just said, it seems like we're waiting until we hit that critical peak that, and you know, start going to these other measures that, that we've gone to before. So, I mean, I, I'll say it honestly, it doesn't seem like a good plan to me.
So, so questions though, Councillor, questions.
Okay, so why do you think that's a good plan with the way we hit that critical capacity?
Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a short response to that. I have a number of other councillors on the question list. So, Dr. Glas, if there's anything else that you wanted to, to add to that, and then I'm, I'm gonna have to move on here. Dr. Glas?
Through Mr. Chair eh, we are looking at, at a number of measures. I've outlined them earlier that are addressing the patterns of spread. These are the measures that we're contin- we're doing in a proactive way.
Uh, so next on my list is Councillor Strout.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Dr. Glasah. Um, just to remind everyone, I'm a registered nurse and I do work in KGH and also in eh, on the side as a vaccinator with mobile vax with the Red Cross. So I understand the cha- the, the, the logic behind what you said tonight at the briefing. Eh, it is essentially that the eh, you can, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you, it is essentially that the severity with amongst the vaccinated population is so much less than it has been in previous waves that the, the measures used to control, the public health measures used to control have changed. Eh, and especially eh, when the motivation is to keep the economy running and keep eh, life continuing as, as close to normal as possible, which is the long, this, eh, the long-term goal of pandemic response. And you can correct any of that if you'd like, when you, when, when asked my question. I do have a question from a constituent, which I will read now. This is a third-year engineering student from Queens who has called and texted me today with a specific question and the setting is eh, December exams for Queen students. So you can imagine a third-year engineer is going to be going to a large exam setting at Queens in a gymnasium. So here's the question verbatim. It's, it's a little bit long, but probably not as long as my preamble. My question to Dr. Glasah, this is his words, would be if he has concerns on transmission of COVID in Queen's exam halls for the upcoming exam period, which will have mandatory, mandatory is in bold, mandatory in-person exams. Queens currently is allowed to stay open at full capacity for exams. It will have hundreds of students per gym with eh, with a minimum of three hundred per gymnasium, as well as sitting students beside each other with no social distancing and different facilities, programs and years of students, which, you know, mixed together, which increases this chance of spread as we will now be entering much larger social bubbles than just the same kids during the twelve weeks of class. At a time with the highest amount of daily cases and highest active case rate, while also having an exam rewrite period, which is almost nine months. The, the rewrite, if you miss the exam, is almost nine, not nine months after the exams are scheduled for students experiencing symptoms. In other words, if you have symptoms and you say you can't go to the exam, you don't get to rewrite that exam for nine more months. This significantly, significantly, that's bolded again, discourages students to want to miss their exams, even if they are experiencing symptoms. In other words, they wouldn't necessarily skip their exams with symptoms because of the nine-month wait. And finally, God forbid, someone you sit beside does not eh, does have COVID and you contract it and are symptomatic when all the students travel home, they put their family members at risk and grandparents and Christmas, at Christmas dinners, potentially unknowingly if they're asymptomatic, which fully vaccinated young people are more likely to be. Finally, how does the plan to ensure students can write their exams with peace of mind, knowing they will not be at risk and not be putting others in the community or their family members at risk? I ask this on behalf of my constituent. Thank you.
Thank you very much eh, through Mr. Chair eh, excellent question. And I, I, it, it's my pleasure to, to eh, to really tell you that we've been, we, that, that's the discussion we had eh, before this eh, staff and we'll be, we'll be discussing this with eh, with Queens. Um, I, I, I won't really describe really what, what more is, is, i- i- is happening in part of these discussions because we want to have the conversation with eh, with the eh, university, but eh, eh, this is a, this is a concern, consideration, something that came up eh, in my, in my discussions today and it's being addressed eh, will be addressed in the, in, in the next day or so.
Thank you. And then, so if I could just ask my own question um, to do with eh, the sort of what we can expect in the future. So you were, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll restrict it to the, to the eh, the goal of maintaining hu- critical hospital capacity. So I'm a critical care nurse, so I understand that very much. In the third wave, we did reach overcapacity in critical care. We had, I think, up to maybe sixty or seventy eh ventilated COVID-positive patients at one time, but only a handful were from KFALN. Most of them were imported from the GTA eh, using that, that four ICU patient bus that they have, the big bus. And um, so I saw that, that was extremely eh, difficult on critical care staff eh, to the point that now with the burnout that happened, eh, the capacity is actually less than it was at that time. You're probably aware of this. So because of staff shortages at KGH, nursing staff shortages, we are in danger of losing capacity for all of our healthcare, like cardiac surgeries and orthopedic surgery. So, so the question would be, at what point, like where are we eh, ti- eh, numbers-wise? Where are we eh, in, in the, how close are we to the point where we may start to see signs of hospital eh, health system breakdown in KFLN?
Thank you eh, through Mr. Eh, Mayor. So this is eh, probably a better question for looking at these indicators eh, to ask of my, my colleagues from eh, the hospital sector. Eh, I can share with you some of the, some of the recent stats in terms of how many are currently in the ICU and hospital and, and how many are on ventilators. Eh, I know that, that there is eh, there is a ripple effect on every bed taken by COVID means other things are and there's an opportunity cost for providing other types of care. And I know that the hospital continues to, to have this eh, very high seasonal demand on care, not related to COVID. So any, any additional strain puts, puts that, that hospital capacity in jeopardy. Eh, in terms of contingency plans and, and capacity, I, I would defer that question to our colleagues from hospital, but we will be, we are looking at this eh, jointly as well in terms of eh, eh, how to message that, that to the community and, and eh, how to justify the some of the actions, very basic actions, but very important ones, like staying home when sick. It's, that's what drives the transmission. That's what we need to, everyone in this community needs to, needs to do. And eh, that, that, that's going to be subject to, to our, our upcoming communications eh, coming jointly with hospitals as well.
I have a simple follow-up question, Your, Your Worship. It's very simple and it should be a yes, no answer of, of that type. Uh, Dr. Glasah, are you able to a write-in order that would require the kind of screening we have at the hospital, which is exactly as you said, eh, stay home if sick, the screening questions that we get at the hospital, which you often see in other places as well, like schools, are you able to mandate that that screening process happen everywhere?
That's the eh, upcoming eh, or, or that's the letter of instruction that's under development. It's exactly covering that topic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eh, next is Councillor Hudson.
Sorry, I, I think my um, the doctor answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Eh, next is Councillor Hill.
Uh, thank you, Worship. Uh, thank you, Dr. Glasah, for, for everything you're doing. I, I had a question about testing and, and eh, a concern expressed that eh, you know, you mentioned that the volume of people going in to get tested is very high and that it's taking a long time, up to three or four days to get eh, 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 a booking for a testing. Is that, is that being addressed or has that been addressed already?
Eh, yes, that's um, I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking for, for details that I, that I have on this. So um, eh, basically, there's a, there's a, a testing capacity run by the assessment center that's operated by Kingston Health Sciences and eh, they have been eh, typically seeing eh, between or around five hundred case eh, patients per day for testing. I receive daily reports in terms of eh, what is the volume and breakdown. So it, it ranges from four hundred and sometimes I've, I, once I've seen a peak at six hundred. Eh, but that's the average volume and that, that stays fairly steady. But in addition to that, there is a, there is a eh, external eh, testing eh, company, contracted company from the province that comes and, 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 and offers additional testing in the evenings and these appointments are added to the eh, to the overall number. So my understanding from discussions with our partners from the assessment center is that there is ample testing capacity. In addition to that capacity through the assessment centers, there's additional, there's initiatives that are happening through the province eh, that you might have heard about are the eh, student antigen testing for, for take-home eh, and PCR self-collection kits that are going to be rolled out through the school system. So that's, that's a, that's going to take away some of that load eh, from the assessment center and, and that's what's being eh, rolled out eh, in this, in the next few days.
Thank you. And, and so you talked about eh, the, the, what's driving eh, the spread right now is people gathering presumably in smaller groups, but in their homes. So are these largely unvaccinated people or is that, or a share of the folks that are there are unvaccinated or is, or is, is this breakthrough cases?
Um, so the um, the numbers are mixed because there could be, there could be individuals who are not yet vaccinated eh, they could be eh, let's say there's a, there's a child eh, that's symptomatic or, or, or a family and then it, and then a family member comes home and eh, eh, transmitted to others. So there might be a, a mix of, of children who are, who are not immunized, adults who are not immunized, those who are fully immunized. We know that breakthrough cases do occur eh, they're less likely, but on a large number in the population, they will, they will happen as well. And those individuals eh, while they are less likely to, to transmit, but they could transmit, that transmission is more likely in the household setting because of the prolonged period of contact and, and exposure that occurs in, 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 in this type of scenario. So that's household, they're not necessarily gathering in households. Cases are driven by eh, by members of the household getting sick from one another. Eh, that's also a very, very strong eh, percentage of, or, or high percentage of, of eh, the spread that we see locally.
So the message is, continues to be, get, get your vaccination, right? And eh, and get these, get the children vaccinated. Then I was gonna ask a question about eh, people being eh, moved eh, out, out to other ICE, eh, ICUs and other parts of the province, but you think that's a question we should be asking of your eh, your hospital care partners, is that right?
So the, 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 the question to ask is at, what are the thresholds for that to happen? Because right now, my, my understanding is that we have, we have eh, currently eh, eleven people in the ICU and eh, from what I've seen in the past from some of the, some of the reporting, that ICU capacity during that third wave, when we're receiving eh, patients from eh, from other parts of the, of the province, that capacity was, or at least the occupancy was fifty. So eh, I don't know where that, where that stands, that, where that eleven stands in comparison to the overall capacity and what the thresholds would be for transfers. That's the question to ask, but I, I don't believe that we are yet at that capacity eh, where, where these transfers need to happen.
Can you project at this point where the peak might sort of pass us, where we might start to see the numbers come down?
Um, these projections are, are typically, the mathematical models of projections are, are subject to significant error and our numbers, however large for this region are, are still eh, not stable enough or not eh, not reliable enough to make projections with minimal error. So this could be, this could be very eh, very challenging to make this type of eh, estimates. They're, they're very challenging and often not accurate, even when you look at the entire pop- population of the province eh, when there's much more data to eh, to go by. So I, I, I wouldn't be able to eh, to provide an estimate like that.
My last question, Your Worship, I promise, that eh, a, a number of, of residents reached out to me today about the communication strategy eh, that you folks eh, will employ or, or, or maybe looking at employing. I think that eh, the concern is that eh, eh, you, you, you clearly, you, you, you have your, your eh, you know what you're doing and, and we, and we recognize that and appreciate that, but maybe that's not being communicated as effectively out to the community as, as some residents would like. Is there, are you looking at, at all at your communication strategy in terms of trying to reach a broader group of people in terms of getting this information out?
Yes, eh, the um, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if, 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 if I'm understanding, getting, getting the message to follow the eh, the recommendations or getting the message explaining why we're doing.
I, I think more in terms of responding to the, the, you know, the increase in numbers and, and, and like eh, you're suggesting to us that we, we shouldn't panic, that we should do all the right things, that there, that, that, that stuff is, you know, what, what needs to be in place is in place. Eh, um, but I think a lot of people are panicking and I, I think they're, they're, they need that, they need a message to, to say it is working or it's not working and you need to do this.
Yes, that's eh, that, that's gonna be the focus of our, our communication in the, in the coming days um, especially linked to eh, additional proactive measures that eh, we will be introducing very shortly.
One, can I ask one last question quickly? Because you did also mention that where the, where the mechanisms are in place to check. So, so for example, at restaurants and bars where people have to present their, their eh, vaccination eh, proof, you're not seeing spread there. Is that correct? Like I, I'm thinking, for example, eh, another, eh, another example would be like the incredible success story of our athletic program in the community where we had, you know, almost two thousand athletes participating in hundreds and hundreds of games and we didn't have any spread in that kind of congregated setting. So where the rules are being applied, they are working. Is, is that what you're, what you're saying?
Yes, and also eh, if I may add, where we know that there are breakdowns in some of the rules that is brought to our attention either through complaints or, 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 or other means, we also see the eh, the spread occurring and eh, because of the, of the confidentiality privacy, we're not able to really show examples and showcase examples of that, but eh, it, it is very clearly showing from, from the numbers that we are seeing that some of these eh, many of these eh eh, places or vast majority of the places that, that have the, the eh, proof of vaccination in effect are in fact safe, safe places. We do look at all the spread and we are, we are following on some of the eh, some of the clusters to, to eh, to really follow up and see if there's any additional lessons to be learned and, and measures to be applied. Eh, but, but when you look at the numbers, it, it, it's quite telling. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to give you some of the, some of the eh, numbers as a reference point. Eh, since the start of the fourth wave eh, we have a total of a thousand and thirteen cases reported. And four hundred our household contacts of fifty-five percent, hundred eighty-four were outbreak-related. And of those eh, again, the food and beverage industry, for example, places with this type of proof of vaccination are not overrepresented. And when they are, there's other issues at play. And we also see eh, for example, when, when we have data from, from case to contact managed, we see other places like eh, gyms used to be the, the, the focus on eh, on the risk. But out of the thousand and thirteen cases, only six are linked to gyms. So that's what, what, what is the basis of my point that broad capacity restrictions in a place or in a type of sector where we don't see the spread, when we see the current measures working, would be would be completely unfair and, and really having serious unintended consequences to the health of the, of the community, of the population. We know how essential physical activity is and, and imposing these restrictions in places that are not driving the transmission eh, And and imposing these restrictions in places that are not driving the transmission uh is wo- wo- would not be justified at this point.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I still have a few different speakers. So just in the interest of time, just looking at the agenda ahead of us, if you just be, try to be as brief as you can in your questions. Uh, we obviously wanted, I had all the answers that we need, but just try to be mindful of it. So my next speaker is Deputy Mayor Chappell. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Chappell, you're unmuted and ready to go.
Thank you, your worship. I always like the way you start off the praising of be mindful of the time. It always seems to be timed right before my opportunity to speak. So I I have a question with regards to uh transmission. And I'm wondering if the transmission is is indicative of the efficacy of the the vaccine waning. And this is why we're seeing the spike similar to what's happened in in Israel, Gibraltar, you um and the UK. I'm wondering if we're just seeing that similar pattern, but we're just a few weeks or months behind. And and supplemental to that same type of question is, are we now able to determine whether it's COVID or COVID um Delta or COVID uh Omni, uh, you know, I don't know, the go block thing. Um, are we able to determine which is which and have we had any incidents of these various variants?
Yes, thank you. Through uh Mr. Mayor, uh, in terms of vaccine waning, it is, it is happening. There's, there's evidence of that happening in in studies. Uh, in our current uh current spread, what in Ontario, what we see is, is certainly most of the population that we, that we would uh have fully immunized in this, in this region would have received the immunization uh within the past six months because most of the immunization effort was happening in the uh, uh, in the summer months, June, July. Uh, so they would not yet be reaching that point where that, when that vaccine waning is significant. It becomes more pronounced after six months and six months being hundred eighty days and current recommendations for third dose for those vulnerable and hundred sixty-eight days. So uh, so that does not seem to be a uh a huge factor, the waning part. What may be a factor is the, is the observation that vaccine tends to be more effective in preventing hospitalization and death, where effectiveness is is in mid to high ninety percent, whereas prevention of infection with of without symptoms is, can be as low as eighty. So so that's just whether, that's the fact of of how this vaccine works. So that's uh that could, that part could be the factor, but it's not, not from the profound impact of of waning. Uh, what is happening in terms of our local cases, they're predominantly all Delta, that Delta is responsible for all the spread that we see. Public Health Ontario and our lab are looking at a screening for possible Omicron mutations that could be indicative of Omicron and we were following up on some of these, some of these screens, so more to come on that. Uh, and there's, there's, there's cer- certain types of sequences, they, it on the, on the PCR test that indicates that that sample needs to be looked up more, more closely, uh, whether it's Omicron or not. Uh, and we're watching that very closely as well. But so far, all the cases that I have here that I talked about were uh Delta.
Okay, um, as I was waiting to uh speak with you and ask a question. The Kingston League Standard has just posted an article about transfer of three patients from the at-capacity ICU. And the fifth of the bench are now occupied by patients with COVID-related illness, according to the CEO. And I just wondered if you were aware of that or uh if that changes any of your perspective based on tonight's discussion.
I was um, I was aware of of some of that plans. Uh, I was not aware that um there were uh made public already. Uh, I am in constant communications with our colleagues from Kingston Health Sciences and that's part of the discussion as to what their thresholds are and how we can uh work jointly uh between public health and uh um our acute care sector to maintain that vital healthcare capacity. So so that's that will be topic of our discussions in the, in the coming days as well.
And I do have one final question that came from a constituent wanting to know that if they were to contract COVID. What is the uh the medical protocol? How how do we treat the COVID? Um, because I I think thankfully, I've been tested a number of times, but I haven't had any symptoms or caught it. So I don't know if someone was to catch COVID, what would they best be able to do to help protect themselves or you know, become medicated? What what is the protocol utilized?
Uh, so the vast, vast majority of people who are contracting COVID, especially among those fully vaccinated, will have a very mild course. It will be no different from a cold that they may have had many times over the past years. Uh, and and they will self-resolve without any, any consequences or 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 ill effects. Uh, if someone is experiencing more serious uh course, when they get more short of breath or they have other comorbidities and and they're not doing well, they know they're not doing well, I advise them that they connect with their healthcare provider who might then have uh some additional uh advice for them. Uh, ultimately, if someone is, is really not doing well, they're the ones who would uh would need to uh seek assistance from paramedics uh or present to emergency department. That's where decisions are made by our clinician colleagues whether the person needs admission. And and ultimately also with with COVID nineteen, it's that because of that response of the body to the virus and and the way it impacts the respiratory system, people need help with ventilation, with breathing. And that's where, where that ICU ventilator capacity becomes uh becomes really that critical for COVID nineteen. Thankfully, that's a very small portion of patients, but that could be an extreme of how um how someone's uh course of COVID could look like. Fortunately, vast majority of population would have a very mild cause, which again, I mentioned, would be no different from normal uh cold that they would have had previously.
So what propylactives are available for people to take? Like, I've been taking vitamin C and D. Is there anything else I should be taking?
Uh, so none of, none of uh these measures have actually been, in in my understanding, proven to, to to work in 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 rigorous studies. Uh, there are some home remedies and everyone, every family would have their the ways of coping with uh cold and flu. Uh, but I I don't believe that there's anything that's, that's actually specifically recommended to um to decrease the risk. I think what, what helps us to decrease the risk apart from immunization is just basically uh taking care of ourselves as much as possible by staying active, by uh by eating healthy and just maintaining overall health for 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 other aspects. That's what helps us fight the uh these infections. But in terms of a specific product or 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 uh medical or 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 over-the-counter intervention, I I I don't think that there's anything that's really proven effective in this type of setting.
Thank you.
Is Counsel Osenick? Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Osenick. I have Counsel Kylie just next to me.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you, Dr. Oglaiza. I don't envy your position and I appreciate that you're calm, productive and evidence-based through this discussion. I want to talk a bit about, go back to Counselor Hill's comments on communications. And just to be frank, I'm finding it a bit troubling that we keep telling people that it's incumbent upon them to stay home when we know that provincially speaking, at least there aren't more than three paid sick days. So I wonder from an equity perspective, how is it that we can rest one of our main strategies for beating this fourth wave on something that people are essentially economically priced out of doing?
Uh, thank you for that question through, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is, this is a very, very significant uh issue. That comes up over and over again. I fully understand that those who are most vulnerable would not often have means to to do what, what needs to be done in order to protect themselves, protect others. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a really significant issue, something that that already been part of advocacy of many, many public health units. Uh, and 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 we need to continue uh advocating for this, fully realizing that that there's limitations to to what individuals can do in this community or in 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 the province uh to um to address this. Um, I know what we can, what we've done in the past was was to provide links to uh various other programs that are might be available through the federal government. And I know that there's a number of initiatives, but it is, it is fairly difficult to navigate, especially for someone who is in that, uh, in that uh stressful situation. And I know that there might be also some, there are some gaps in terms of how to access benefits if someone just needs to take a day off to get tested and wait for the test results. So uh, that was part of my advocacy and 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 letters and and messaging that that I was communicating to the province uh in my position in in uh my previous position in public health, in other health unit. And that's something that 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 needs to uh, uh, that advocacy needs to continue, but I'm fully aware and mindful that there's not a quick solution here.
Yeah, thank you for that. And through you, Mayor Patterson, supplemental of that related to your comments, Dr. Oglaiza about getting tested. So we've heard that there is the testing backlog and we recognize the limitations of the professionals that are needed to bring that up to a quicker amount of time to turn tests over. But I guess that I might, my question is the same. If someone wanted to get tested, would the best way for them to do it be buying their own test? And would that then be another financial barrier for folks? It's inequitable healthcare. If you're gonna get better healthcare because you can pay for it, is there anything that public health can do to provide free testing for, for people in that regard? Other than what's obviously done through the assessment centers, I mean?
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is something that that's really important point to make because the testing that's available, the rapid testing that someone could buy. It's, it's their rapid antigen test. It's not as effective as the uh uh PCR lab-based testing that's done through assessment center. And we do recommend for these circumstances that everyone goes through that lab-based based testing. Uh, so so there isn't, uh, there isn't an opportunity really to get the um, get that, uh, get, get, get these home tests for every, for, for, for one who may need them because they will be missing uh positives. And 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 we've seen that too, looking at it as 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 another way of reducing barriers, we're exploring options for self-administered swabs or tests uh and and developing a process for that. Uh, but I mean, at this point, the best, and that that's something that's already being done for the school-based population. Uh, that's something that may, may become part of a, of a broader strategy uh in this, in this region. And we've done that successfully for other infections, like sexual transmitted infections. People do pick up swabs from public health and they can then drop them off for testing. It, that drop off and 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 that may extend the turnaround time. So still the fastest way of getting the, the result will be through the assessment center. But that might be another, another option as well to uh, uh that will be available and will be available for school-day children. It might be available for for others in this, in this community as well. We're working on this.
Thank you. And finally tying the two questions together, is there anything that council can do to support you and our colleagues who are on the board of health in advocating for the things that you've mentioned? Because again, frankly, I'm just quite concerned that we're perpetuating different outcomes for people of different means based on these recommendations. So if there's anything we could do, it'd be helpful to know.
Thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I will, um, that's something I'll, I'll have a discussion with uh with our board, um, chair and vice chair to see exactly what kind of supports we may, we may ask for. And anything that you would normally do from your um, your position on, on the, on the municipal council along the lines of increasing access to uh or rather for increasing access for, for uh benefits for people who are seeking testing. Uh, that's, that certainly would be, i- is one area that you identify as a, as a, as a potential gap. And I've seen that before as well. So uh, but again, I'll, I'll defer to, to our, our uh board chair and vice chair and 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 then uh connect back with, with this group. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is Counsel Osenick.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Through you, um, just two questions to Dr. Oglaiza. Thanks for speaking to us tonight. With the high number of cases we have in Kingston right now, um, is it possible to post the number of cases? Um, oh, you know, that come up on a Saturday and a Sunday. Uh, a lot of people, like, we didn't see anything. Well, we saw the numbers on Friday and then we had to wait till Monday. Is it possible to post the number of cases on a Saturday and Sunday too?
Uh, thank you for that question through, Mr. Mayor. I will, I'll speak to my team. I know this, this has significant operational consideration. We are working uh pretty much seven days a week and 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 uh I I'll see what we can do in terms of 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 ex- extending that uh that information sharing to the public. I know that once we add up cases from Saturday and Sunday uh and Monday, then then that there's a, there's a shocking number uh that that comes up and and it's, and it's uh, it might be helpful for the community to know what's, what's, what's happening, but we have to balance that with with the need to do that uh case uh management over the weekend as well. And there's teams that are working um over the weekend as well uh here. So uh, let me take that back and and I'll see what we can do in order to uh be transparent and communicating with the public as, as it is, it is desired.
Okay, thank you very much. And my second question is, um, back in July, we had the outbreak in Kingston at a nail salon. If there is an outbreak um at another retail place, uh, would that be would that be publicized? Like, we haven't heard of any retail place since then. And we have so many people doing holiday shopping right now, even if it was just to say, it looks like there's some cluster of cases from the Cataract Way Mall where the Rio Can Center, when you've done the contact tracing, um, you know, like, would you reveal a retail outlet place if that did come up at, you know, during the contact tracing?
Uh, through Mr. Mayor, the main reason why we post uh specific businesses or names or locations is to facilitate the contact tracing. So if we uh, we have a location where it may be, uh, there's no requirement for the significant traffic uh of people coming in that that might have been exposed to a case where in attendance, uh, that's where you do public notification. And that, 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 that's something that uh, that happens uh in any situations where you would see that premise is posted. Otherwise, if we have a good uh handle on who were at risk and based on the, on the nature of how what the case did when they were in that one location, uh, we can narrow down the, the, the number of people who are uh, who are at risk, uh, and and identify as contact, we will reach out to them directly. So there's no need for contact for public notification. But we also know that at this point, that that public notification uh might be, might be somewhat uh somewhat misleading. Uh, because we know that there's those already a baseline risk happening in the community. That risk is typically lower in uh, in certain types of settings, uh, and and when there's no close contact or or when, when people are able to maintain distance or are, and are masked. Uh, so we will, we will balance that need for public notification with uh with what, what the needs for case contact management are. And and in this situation, in this in this, in this day and time when we, where we are seeing this unprecedented rise in cases, uh any, anyone who's experiencing some symptoms itself, whether or not they have been notified, it might have been a contact of a case, should still maintain the same precautions. So get tested uh and and isolate until they hear the results. Uh, because I, right now, we cannot, we cannot exclude that any of the symptoms that someone might be experiencing are not from COVID. We have to assume it's COVID unless proven otherwise.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next is Counsel Neil.
Thank you very much. And a couple of quick questions uh related to Counsel, a couple of Counsel Kylie's questions. Um, my two-and-a-half-year-old grandson in daycare gets tested once or twice a week because daycare have a very sensible policy. If you cough, sneeze, you get sent home, you don't come back until you get tested, uh, which I really applaud. But I've never heard of uh them having to take any more than twenty minutes at uh, at the, the former psych hospital to get tested. And the couple of times I've gone in to be tested, it's been a ten-minute thing. Are, are we indeed? Is there difficulty in getting tested? I wasn't aware that there was.
So uh, through Mr. Mayor, the, I I get reports from, from the public uh who are having trouble booking appointments. Um, our advice to the individuals is to uh to try again. We s- we, we have capacity in that assessment center and there are still no-shows throughout the day. Uh, so there might be times where, there might be some peak times where, uh, where maybe there's more demand for appointments and 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 it's hard to say uh really what's, what's, what's driving this, but But uh I know that steps have been taken by our partners from acute care by KHSC uh and assessment center to e- expand that availability. So my understanding is availability is there, but the there might be perhaps some some times in day where it's more difficult to um to book.
Yeah. And my next comment question, um if if this is inaccurate, I'd like my colleagues on public health to point it out to me. Uh, but I seem to recall that that uh KFLNA board sent uh an endorsement for extending sick days uh to the province. And we've endorsed a couple that have been sent to us from other public health ones. Were you aware of that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um I believe so, yes. Uh, I I know that's that's something that's been uh done through many public health units. Um, I have done one endorsing and 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 sending the current uh sick day coverage framework uh to the province. Uh, and that that was, I believe that was either earlier this year or last year.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a really quick questions. Thanks for your presentation. Um, at the very beginning, you had a map of Ontario with like the checkerboard map. In the past, Toronto, which is a highly dense population area, uh they had higher COVID rates than we did. And all of a sudden, things have flipped around. Um, plus the nature of the kind of the whole checkered style of that map. Like, obviously, some communities are doing better than others, and that's always been the case. But what are we learning from the communities that are doing so much better? And like, what's 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 gone wrong all of a sudden in Kingston?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, this is uh it's um there might be, there might be some explanation to that. Some of them are are bordering on speculation, but I will, with your permission, I'll I'll entertain some of that discussion. It's when we saw a very significant spread happening in in the Toronto area and highly densely populated areas during the 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 part of the um of the third uh wave. And and previously, uh we've seen large numbers of people exposed. We may not even see, we may not even be able to um get the uh the full picture of of how much of the spread was happening in these communities. And that's because the happening in those jurisdictions exceeded the capacity, the positivity rates uh in the up significantly. Uh, and and many case, many cases would not have had the contact management done at that time. So the spread might have been much, much greater um than what we even could determine from the known cases. And known case, known cases being those who who uh were pursuing testing and and were diagnosed. Um, in some, in 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 other jurisdictions, uh like the Eastern Ontario and and I I was part of that um the Eastern Ontario group before, um all the measures were were applied uh the same way as as in other parts of the province. And uh through a number of factors not fully understood at the time, we were relatively spared. There was a lot of uh purposeful action on on behalf of us Medical Office of Health here. Um, and these actions, these measures were uh were effective in in stopping the um the spread of the the previous variants of COVID-19. And they were effective to the point also that even though there was still spread of COVID-19, uh we have practically uh reduced the 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 spread of other pathogens such as influenza in in in, for example, in the previous influenza season. Now, fast forward to this uh fourth wave where we see of numbers of of population like in this community or or in the neighboring communities. Uh, people might not, some people are not vaccinated, some people are vaccinated uh and and protected fully. But some people are not vaccinated and those have not never been exposed to the virus. So when we have Delta now happening in the in the cold and flu season in areas of higher dense population density, uh and with social interactions now being at the much different level that they were during the uh third wave, uh we see transmission. What's mitigating this is vaccination. So the the cases are not are not, most of the cases are not severe. But we see the spread because this virus spreads much more easily. And we are now as as the side as a community and not just this area, the whole province, we moved that reopening. That was uh we we went to 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 stage three, which is a very different situation that we were in the in the second, in the second, in the third wave. So that's what's what's driving the spread right now. Now, are we are, I I commented earlier that going back to the the times from the third wave when we had the stay at home order uh is is problematic. Uh, it's 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 not going to, it it's going to have profound impacts on on the community that that will go beyond uh beyond the uh beyond what uh what we can achieve by by limiting the spread of COVID. So so we may not always, we may not be able to protect spread among those who are highly vulnerable. But we will significantly hurt large portion of of the community uh through these measures. And and that's really where extreme caution is needed, that that any measures undertaken have to be sensible. They have to be proactive. They have to be addressing the the patterns of spread that we are seeing. And they have to be considering all the potential unintended consequences. And we've seen a lot of those unintended consequences at at the time. But it's not something we can, we can entertain where the vast majority of the population are fully immunized.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. So, Dr. Glazza, thank you very much. Uh, thank you. At this point, we will uh we'll move on in our agenda. So I will circle back. Uh, we do still have one delegation on our agenda. Uh, if Ms. Farrar is is on. Uh, it does seem that the uh technical issues are are still ongoing. So um so we'll continue with the agenda and we um we can uh circle back again. Okay, so uh with that, uh we'll move on in our agenda. Are there any petitions to present? Counselor Neil.
Thank you. And um just a quick question, if I could. If if Ms. Farrar, uh is is it a you uh on the on the 21st, will she have an opportunity to speak?
Yes. So so Counselor Neil, so so to be clear, um I I know that you're not presenting a petition.
I am. I am.
Oh, you are? Okay, okay. So just so you know, uh we will circle back one more time. And yes, I'm sure if there are still technical difficulties, that we can find another time for the delegations to speak.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Neil, you have the floor on your petition.
I I thank you. And I actually have two petitions that I received together because they're very, very similar. But I'll present them and read them differently. The one uh which has 175 signatures is to calm the Johnson Street Speedway. And I will mention that Johnson Street I share with our colleague Counselor Stroud, so he may wish to speak to this as well. Uh, but the petition is, we, the undersigned, respectfully request that traffic calming measures be implemented for Upper Johnson Street, Sir Johnny McDonald Boulevard to Victoria Street, such as one designated Johnson Street corridor, a community safety zone with speed cameras and photo radar, two, installing a traffic light at the intersection of Regent and Johnson Streets, and three, lowering the speed limit to 40 kilometers per hour and installing speed monitor signs. The need for measures to reduce excessive speed on Johnson Street has been increasing over the years, especially since the removal of the odd street parking. The newly constructed pothole-free surface will only encourage dangerous increased speeds unless calming action is taken. And that was the first uh one that I received. And the second one is similar, but it's uh called Calm Brock Street. And this is uh what people signed for, and there were 48 signatures on this. Designating the Brock Street corridor as a community safety zone, installing a traffic light at the intersection of Brock Street and Palace Road, banning transport truck use, lowering the speed limit to 40 kilometers per hour, installing speed monitor signs, speed cameras, and photo radar, regularly monitoring speed, sound, and vibration along the route. And lastly, have emergency services use sirens only when uh needed between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM as before. Uh, these I received together and they are working collaboratively with one another. But they, because they had a different preamble, I'm presenting them. And I'll drop them off with the clerks tomorrow. I'm presenting them uh as individual ones. And I believe they intend to come in delegation to our next EITP meeting as well.
I thank you very much, Counselor Neil. Any petitions to present? Counselor Stroud.
Yes, as Counselor Neil just stated, uh I received the same petition, the one with 175 signatures. I guess I should first ask the clerk, what is the procedure when um when there is a petition that contains signatories from two districts and are presented?
So so Counselor Stroud, I'm going to take that one. So only one counselor can present a petition and we can't have a debate on a petition. So it needs to be a separate petition for somebody else to be able to speak to it. So if if Counselor Neil has presented that petition, it is already in the record. So.
Okay, well, uh I I was asked to pre- to present the same petition, but I guess I'm not permitted to do so. Uh, I should say that it's likely we will be uh receiving more petitions on the subject.
Thank you very much. Are there any other petitions to present? Okay, uh so moving on, we do have uh two motions of condolence. So first, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Chappelle, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of David Arthur Snow, who passed away on Friday, November 26, 2021. David was the former manager of the Kingston Airport and was a highly respected city employee. He was a passionate supporter of the airport and the community and known for his generosity and kindness. My thoughts are with his family during this difficult time. Second move by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Chappelle, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family, friends, and work colleagues of Ellen Elizabeth Harvey, who passed away Thursday, uh December 7. Ellen was with the city of Kingston for eight years, during which time she worked as a cashier in recreation and leisure services. And for the past two years was a much loved member of the customer experience team. Ellen comes from a very close and loving family and is adored by her parents, Ruth and Todd. She was an devoted mother to her two young children. Ellen was 32 years old. My thoughts and prayers are with the family as they deeply mourn her passing. So people pull the vote. All those in favor? Oh, so. And that's Carrie. Okay, so now we will move to deferred motions. We have a couple of deferred motions. Uh, first, uh was moved by Counselor Ossanic, cited by Counselor Doherty. And this was uh a previous recommendation from clause four, report number two from the CAO, uh the update on Kingston Inner Harbor contaminated sediment management. Is there any uh any discussion? Okay.
First of all, uh your worship, just uh to clarify, is this the item uh that we had a delegation for? This deferred item?
That's, yeah, so Counselor Stroud, yes, this was the item the delegation was to speak to.
Okay, so uh can staff uh answer the question of uh what is, are we dealing with technical difficulties or what is the reason the delegation could not present?
So um my understanding is that um that the video and audio are not working from Ms. Farrar's end. There have been a number of attempts to try to fix that.
Okay, uh so I guess the right thing to do would be to move deferral of this so that the delegation could speak to it before we uh discuss it further or vote on it. So I would like to do so.
Okay, so we have a motion from Counselor Stroud to defer the item until
The next council meeting.
December 21st council meeting. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Kylie. Just give me one moment, please.
Exactly. I just wanted to note, there's the two pieces.
Okay, so so sorry, so I'm just con- confirming with the clerk here. So we have um the deferred motion or the deferred item, number one. But there is also under report number one from the CAO in our current agenda, there is item number. That's fine. I'm sorry, under report number two from the CAO, uh clause number four. So I would suggest that procedurally, Counselor Stroud, that you would be um uh proposing to defer both of them until the meeting of December 21st, just to uh to be put here. So if that's if that's.
Yes, it would be logical to keep them together and to defer them both. If that's agreeable, your worship.
Thank you. So and so there is, so effectively, so everyone's clear. So this would be a motion to defer uh both um item one under deferred motions and then clause four under report number uh two from the CAO. That's the move by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Neil. Uh, any discussion on the deferral? Counselor Stroud, so again, uh discussion is with respect to time, place, or purpose. And you have uh one minute. Counselor Stroud.
Yes, thank you, your worship. It's just uh I I know uh Mrs. Farrar uh would want to speak to us, very much wants to speak to us and would wouldn't normally let technical difficulties prevent uh her from doing so. Um, and uh she has spent, you know, her, most of her, of the last several decades, you know, engaging on the the health and diversity of the ecological diversity of the Inner Harbor and and would, you know, has a lot, I've learned, I've learned myself a lot from us from Farrar over the years on this subject. I really think we can't go any further without hearing from her. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else to time, place, or purpose? Counselor Farnesin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not really opposed to that. I'm just wondering if there's any um advantage to waiting till we get to report number two. Like, could the technical difficulties be cleared up in the interim?
Okay, so this, I'm just, I'm just communicating with the clerks. There have been a number of attempts to try to email and to call Ms. Farrar, and nothing has been successful to this point. So um I mean, I I don't expect it's going to take too much. I shouldn't think so. Maybe, I'm not sure how much time will be in between this item and clause four of report number two. Uh, so uh what what I would propose is that uh if the if the technical difficulties were to be uh resolved, then council could always put forward a motion to reconsider the motion.
Okay, I'm I'm fine with that.
Okay, is there anybody else then on the motion to defer? Okay, we will call the vote then, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to deferred motion number two, moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor McLaren. Whereas there are fewer applications from members of council than vacancies for the following committees' boards, therefore be resolved that council select the members of council to be appointed to serve in the following committees' boards for term ending November fourteenth, twenty twenty two. So we have one vacancy for one counselor for the Cataract Region Conservation Authority. Do I have any volunteers? I see Counselor Hill and I see Counselor Osterhoff. Counselor Osterhoff.
Sorry, Mayor Patterson, I just want to clarify, I, who is on that now? That's me and Lisa, correct?
Okay, so Counselor Osterhoff, if you're already on the C R C, you cannot volunteer to be on it twice. So you are effectively disqualified. Counselor Hill, you're volunteering?
People are frozen to me.
Yeah, I want to order Deputy Mayor, I think we need you to take over. We've lost connection.
So we just wait a second or? There he is, okay.
So you know, you know, the funny thing is from my perspective, that I called the vote and I raised my hand and nobody else did anything. And I'm like, man, that's crazy. And then I'm like, oh, wait a minute. Not that everybody else is frozen, I'm frozen. Anyways, I am back. So we will, we will call the vote again on deferred motion number two. All those in favor? And that's there, thank you. Opposed? And that carries. Okay, and then on the deferred motion number three, I am looking for a volunteer for the Board of the Downtown Kingston Business Improvement Area. Do I have a volunteer? I wish we're all frozen again, would you? Any volunteers? One, one, one. So, Counselor Osterhoff. Very good, thank you very much. Okay, so moved by Counselor Ossanic, seconded by Counselor Neil, that Counselor Osterhoff be appointed to the board for a term ending November fourteenth, twenty twenty two. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to report number one from the C A O.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Deputy Mayor Chappelle, but report number one from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so is there anyone that wants to separate any of the three clauses, Counselor McLaren? Separate clause three? Okay, thank you. So if there are no other separations, we will first vote on clause one and two together. So clause one, twenty twenty two scheduled meetings. Clause two, data license agreements and delegated approval and signing authority for future data sharing agreements. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to clause three, drinking water quality management system, management review report and endorsement of operational plan. Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. So it's just a quick question to staff. Given the new, the recent news out of B C and may have happened in Everett and Merritt, B C, and how the water was, the water system there was essentially destroyed by an atmospheric river. Will there be plans or new plans being made that will take into consideration adverse climate effects in Kingston?
Okay, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you through you, your worship. Thank you for the question, Counselor McLaren. In our drinking water quality management system, under the risk assessment element, Utilities Kingston does have a risk assessment procedure and risk assessment outcomes to ensure that potential hazardous events and that would result in drinking water health hazards. We identify those and that the appropriate monitoring, control, response measures are developed to mitigate these risks associated with the hazards. And so as part of that process, we would identify potential hazardous events that could be associated with drinking water health hazards, assess those risks, identify the probability and consequence and detectability of them happening. And, and we have those in, we have those in place already. And so as part of that, it's important to remember that, but what we do included in there is climate change as well as extreme weather events and other potential hazardous events. So we have in our plan identified resulting hazards of what those might be and how we would respond to those. And, and so if we did have an extreme weather event, like the, like the ones that you're talking about and impacts from climate change, we've already identified what some of those risks might be to our drinking water system. So that could be a loss of power, possible disruption to system makes, alarm failures, structural failure. And as part of that review and that assessment that takes place every calendar year and a new assessment every three years, we look at how we would mitigate those risks and what's the response? Should we have any failures in the system? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Quiley.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Hello, Ms. Roberts. I'm wondering, can you help me understand, is this a different report than the one that we usually receive annually that council is responsible for, legally speaking, around the quality of water in the community?
Um, through you, worship. Thank you for the question. No, so this report that is on the agenda tonight is regarding a top management review of the audit results of the drinking water quality management system and the reendorsement of the operating plan for the Kingston and Kana drinking water systems. The report tonight does not replace those annual water quality and wastewater summary that we bring to council for approval each year in February. This report on the agenda tonight is prepared by a third party that, that reviews our conformity to our drinking water quality management system to make sure that the things that we're, say we're going to do, that we're doing. So this report does replace those that are coming at the beginning of next year.
Perfect, yeah. When I was going through it, I thought it looked different and I was a bit confused, so I'm glad to know that. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, then we will call the vote on clause three. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to report number two from the C A O.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, and report number two from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, clause one, approval of the project and operating grant recommendations for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two City of Kingston Heritage Fund as administered by the Kingston Association of Museums, Art Galleries and Historic Sites. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Number two, lease and municipal capital facility agreement, six ten Montreal Street, Kingston Indigenous Language Nest. Counselor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if, if the, once the lease is formalized, if Indigenous, the Language Nest can also organize some outdoor, outside ceremony. There's quite a bit of grass area there. So does the lease include the proper use of the land around it as well? And functional, for, to address the needs that the community has?
Thank you, and through you, and thank you for that question, Counselor Doherty. The, the current use agreement that would be covered in lease actually does have some limited restrictions on the use of the exterior space, and that's based on just some preliminary assessments with environment regarding a, a community or parkland use of, of that land. And that is something that staff are working to address moving forward as, as part of the considerations for the green initiatives, et cetera, that were mentioned in the report. So at this time, there's no public gathering on the exterior space, but we've been very, very open in conversation with the Language of Nest about that in the immediate use provisions. But certainly we're working toward a use then that would allow them, you know, in that five year lease term, a full use of that outdoor space, because you're right, there is a significant amount of green space at the site. It's one of the reasons why the site is quite attractive.
Thanks.
Next is Deputy Mayor Chappelle.
Thank you, through your worship. One, one of the concerns I have with this lease agreement is that this is a stone building that requires maintenance and ongoing repair costs. And although we're waiving the fees for taxation and other, other issues, should there not be some sort of cost to, to help maintain this building? Like, what is the actual ongoing operating expenses just to have the building as it is? And, and so, no, I'm, I'm certain there'd be other organizations that would have loved to have an opportunity like this. And so I, I'm not comfortable supporting this when it's not sustainable for, for the maintenance of this building.
So Deputy.
My question is, how much is it currently cost to maintain this building? And so how much additional funding are we actually subsidizing this, this lease?
There's someone from staff. Oh, Ms. Chappelle.
Thank you, and through you, and thank you for the question, Counselor Chappelle. Facilities Maintenance and Construction Services, when the building was turned back over to the city, did work to confirm what the annual maintenance and facility support costs for the facility are, it's approximately thirty two thousand dollars. And that has been included in the operating budgets that council has already seen into twenty twenty two and thereafter. And I also think it's important to note that through the report in twenty twenty, report sixty of twenty twenty with the initiative outlined to provide an interim community gathering space and use, the option was brought to council and council supported at that time that council would provide space to Indigenous community members for the purposes of programming and gathering. And in that report, it also did detail and include that, that council would support the facility maintenance components of that space once selected and provided. So what we're seeing now is sort of the move forward of that council endorsed initiative to this discussion on six ten Montreal.
Okay, next is Counselor Kyle.
Thank you, Counselor Chappelle asked the question I was considering as well.
There's no other discussion, we will call the vote, and all those in favor? Opposed? Man, carries by a vote of eleven to one, Counselor Chappelle opposed. Okay, so next is clause number three, approval of temporary patio two eighty five Queen Street. Counselor Hodgson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Um, this was, of course, a type of deferral. The, for one very small section of the bylaw we passed to, for temporary patios in September. And my, this is in my district, so it's of importance to, to the neighbors. The my concern is, there's that that the report indicates that there, there maybe, may raise concerns regarding people gathering. It doesn't say anything about the operation of the patio in which there were complaints before and after we passed our previous motion. And it remains a matter of concern in the neighborhood. And I've polled them recently. So this, this, this is the only property like this in the whole city. Okay, it, it normally is, is the commercial venture on the residential lot line and which is, you know, if you wanted to do that, it's prohibited under the downtown harbor area zoning bylaw. But it is the only one with two residential lot lines. So the citizens are concerned about invasion into their neighborhood of a commercial enterprise. It's right on residential street. And because it's a through lot from Queen Street. So the first thing I'd like to address here is there are measures to be in place to mitigate the situation. And I would like to make a motion, if the clerk can put it up, to add a condition which was part of the the conversations I have with staff and with, with the neighborhood. And so this basically adds to, one of the conditions is that the patio closes eleven P M. And the other condition I wish to add is that, that the service on the patio will end at ten thirty P M.
So. That's just, and maybe I'll just, I'll just pause there so you don't have to use any more of your speaking times. I'll just, perhaps, everyone can see on the screen, the motion to amend, moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, that report number two, clause three from the C A O be amended in adding, in paragraph one, by adding there two, and a further condition that service on the patio will end at ten thirty P M. Okay, so Counselor Hodgson, so your amendment is on the floor and I will restart the clock and you are free to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, to be brief as possible, this was part of the negotiations between the three parties, the city, the citizens and, and the owner. So it's not news. Making a ten thirty service end is the same as having last call, which is very common in restaurants and bars. So I'm just asking that we formalize it and become part of the measure. And the other measure is that they can only access this particular patio from Queen Street. That was to stop gathering and carousing on Coleman Street. So I would ask council to approve this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any discussion on the amendment only? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. I, I am inclined to support the amendment. Did I miss, was there a discussion with the business owner on this?
That's a question, isn't it? Yeah. Well, at one time, I believe it was, because that, that was being conducted by senior staff back in August, September. It doesn't, from this report, it doesn't seem to have been, it's not included in the report, that's all I can tell you. So I'm just trying to formalize it and make sure it is there. I don't think it's an imposition of any good deal, because they're going to close at eleven and not have it slop over eleven. And, you know, last call's got to occur sometime. So normal way of doing that is a half an hour.
Okay, well, I just wanted to hear that again. Thank you.
So Counselor Stroud, I'll just pause, because I, I see that C A O hurdle has also put her hand up, so she may want to also respond to your question. As C A O hurdle.
Mr. Mayor, so maybe just to add to the information that Counselor Hodgson provided, I, I was actually the person that contacted the business owner when the complaints were coming in earlier this year, and this was discussed at a previous council meeting. So what was agreed with the property owner was that the patio would close at eleven o'clock, and he did put that in writing to, to the city. So that actually started to, to be implemented this year. So this fall, he actually moved ahead with an earlier closure. We didn't dictate the last call, when the last call was going to be. We didn't dictate the last call, when the last call was going to happen, because we thought that that was probably his to manage as the property owner. But 11 o'clock was a timeframe that was agreed to for the closure of the patio.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the amendment only, please? Counselor?
Thanks, Mayor Patterson. Through you, perhaps to CEO Hurdle or other staff, how would changing this time for a specific location interface with the other noise bylaws? I'm just trying to think if this is oddly site-specific, though I appreciate why it is. In other words, does it overrule other bylaws? How does that shake out?
Through you, Your Worship, the noise bylaws would still remain in full force. It would not override it. Counselor?
Okay, thanks. That's good.
Is there anybody else on the amendments? Counselor Strad?
Thank you, Worship. So just so we're clear, so the noise bylaw normally would say 11:00 p.m. And that is the reason for the closure time of 11:00 p.m. But what was happening in practice prior to what the CEO described as the business owner agreeing and putting in writing to close at 11:00 p.m., and what we see here in the original recommendation, was that the, in reality, the there was noise emanating from the patio past 11:00 p.m. So so my question to staff is, what is, what has been the historic, just so it's clear before we vote, what was, what was the reality prior to the discussions about the 11:00 p.m. closing time at this site with the temporary patio license?
So Counselor Strad, I think that that's a question for the main and the main clause. Because this amendment is speaking only to the adjustment to 10:30 for any patio service. So I ask you to hold that question till we get to-
Well, no, it is, it is actually relevant to the amendment, because the mover of the amendment stated that the 10:30, the last call, the half hour before the 11:00 p.m. is to allow for an 11:00 p.m. closing. So, but we-
Yes, I know, but I realize that, but I'm just, but the amendment isn't, isn't speaking to the 11:00 closing, right? So really, the debate on this amendment is really about whether or not to impose the 10:30 last call, given the 11:30 closing. I understand what you're saying, but I think that the discussion on the 11:00 closing really should come on the main clause.
Right, but before, okay, maybe I should rephrase the question so that it's more relevant to the amendment. If you don't mind. To staff, when, when, or perhaps to the mover, whoever received the complaints, were, was there any evidence that the that the, that there was a gap? That there, that there's a, is there any way that we can quantify the length of time between last call and when the noise might stop? Because it's at 11:00 p.m. that the noise becomes contrary to bylaw.
Is there anyone from, can we strike?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. In terms of the actual complaints that were received for this property, we had five different complaints that came in mostly over the summertime. The last complaint that staff received with respect to noise concerns was on August 12th, and that was prior to the time of the changes being put into place that were agreed upon between the property owner with feedback from the neighbors that CEO Hurdle was mentioning. So there, there, in those cases, there were five calls. There weren't infractions that were found in each occurrence, but there were some occurrences of amplified noise. But again, since the restrictions have been put in place that were agreed upon by the property owner, staff have received no further complaints on this particular property.
Okay, but that doesn't answer my question. The question is, from the complaints, it was, was it, was there, were there complaints that there were, there was noise past 11:00 p.m.?
Thank you. I'm just looking at the case history. I don't see the time indicated associated with the case history. Unless Mr. Park has more details, I have the dates of the occurrences. I know they were in the evening, but I don't have the exact specified time.
Through you, Your Worship, as Commissioner Agnew stated, we don't have times associated with the complaints, so it's difficult to say when they occurred.
Okay, well, that leaves me kind of ambivalent about the amendment, because we don't know whether it's going to solve the problem of noise complaints in the neighborhood. I presume amplified noise and loud conversations, you know, that would be on the, on Colburn Street, adjacent to a licensed patio, is the reason for the noise complaints or the community complaints. I don't know. I don't know whether, maybe I'll ask the mover of the amendment, why is it that you think this amendment will will prevent future complaints?
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. The there were quite a few. At a certain point, I started to get the complaints rather than staff to some degree. And at some point, the the negotiations were done in September, I believe. And actually, it lasted longer than that. And so this, this idea was to make sure that the establishment knew that would prepare themselves to close at 11:00 rather than stretching it beyond 11:00, which did occur, according to what I'm told, on more than one occasion. So it's just a prophylactic move, basically. And that's why I may, I suggest it was akin to a last call. It's simply a preparatory move to closing at 11:00, remembering that the that the noise bylaw allows this kind of noise to go on. I think it's from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So if this establishment is right in a neighborhood, then there's no relief under certain circumstances from, realistically, the middle of the afternoon, maybe noon, middle of the afternoon on. And that, I was going to speak to when we talked about the main amendment, the main motion is the experience of the neighbors. And they, at my suggestion, they kept those records of their situations and incidents and their complaints.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I guess I I would agree then that this putting the last call, as it were, in writing is a good idea, and I will support the amendment, but I will have something to say to the main motion. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the amendment only? Counselor Neil?
Yes, and I want to thank the district councillor. I totally support the amendment. I worked my way through university bartending, and I have to say that we did last call at 10:00 to 1:00, and we were lucky to be out of there by 1:30 or quarter to 2:00. So, so that's the reality. If we say you have to close at 1:00 without this further provision, I think there will continue to be complaints and perhaps even fines to the owner. So this is a sensible motion, amendment that I will support.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else on the amendment? Okay, so we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, Counselor Hutchinson, you have a minute thirty left on the clock. We're back now to the main clause as amended.
Right. Well, in explaining the amendment, I explained part of what I was going to say to the main motion. And that is essentially that I polled the neighborhood. Essentially, people, even though there was an agreement in place, people decided that they, you know, they could live with it because it was going to end. Right? And, I mean, it's now closed off. There's no patio there at the moment. But this is really speaking to what happens in the spring, summer, and fall of 2022. Their general take of the neighborhood is that if this is prohibited under the such a patio is prohibited under the existing bylaw, and which will come into effect again in 2023. Okay, January 1. So as long as we don't, as long as council doesn't worry about it, it'll expire. So the temporary provision expires. So I just wanted the council to know that the experience of the neighborhood is is not particularly good. And that phoning the owner did not necessarily result in a particularly good result.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I, you know, I represent another downtown district that has very few patios, but has a few. And, and I think anyone that's, that's in that, any one of us that represents such a situation will empathize with Counselor Hutchinson on this issue. The, you know, I just think we need to stop and think about what it is that we're faced with here with this recommendation. So the original temporary measure, you know, we understand, you know, why it all happened. The businesses needed a little bit of help. And so we were, you know, bending and breaking some rules to to allow that to happen. It was in the context of lower gathering numbers. It was in a context of, you know, trying to get people back out and participating in the economy, supporting local business. We get it. We all understand the reason the temporary patio was first approved by staff. It's now, I mean, in parallel to the conversations we had with the medical officer of health, we're now going on to our second year, like our second full year, going into our third year of the pandemic by by April of next year of 2022, around the time this patio will be opening up again, we'll be in our third year of the pandemic, third year. Okay? So so at some point, we're going to have to contemplate, when do the temporary and emergency measures end? And when when can we get back to normal? And, and so on this one, what we've got is an extension of a temporary temporary patio to another full patio season. And, and the report clearly states this is the only property in this particular category in the city. So, and as the councillor stated, this is in a residential area with a through lot that goes through to a fully residential street. Every other property on Colburn Street is residential. And, you know, you basically punked a patio down there. And contrary to bylaw. And so what is the effect of that? It is, it erodes and undermines many of the bylaws that we had in place before the pandemic started. And I question the wisdom of extending temporary measures into 2022 of any, of any kind. But this one is like, is a pretty glaring example of how important it is for us to transition back to something that is more sustainable year over year. Once you've entered the third year of a declared emergency, it's not an emergency anymore. It's like we've adapted to a new reality. And if we want that new reality to mean bars until, you know, 11:00 p.m. in residential areas, then we need to, then we'll need to change the patio bylaw citywide, right? So this is, this is a dangerous situation. I really think it's a foolish recommendation, and I plan to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on Clause Number Three. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, that carries by a vote of nine to three. Counselor Neil, Strad, and Hutchinson opposed. Okay, on to Clause Five, Audit and Accountability Fund, Human Services Integration Project. All the votes, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, Report Number Three from Heritage Kingston.
Moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Doherty, that Report Number Three from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
Would anyone like any of the items within the Heritage Kingston report to be separated? Counselor Strad?
Sorry, Mayor Patterson. Yeah, yes, 85 85 Sidnum Street. I'm just trying to find the number. I'm sorry. Number two?
Yep, so that's Clause Two. So if there are no other separations, then what I first propose is that we approve the entire report except for Clause Two, Subsection One, for 85 Sidnum Street. So first on that, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Now on to Clause Two, Subclause One, Approval of Application for Permit 85 Sidnum Street. Counselor Strad?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I will be moving a deferral on this file, and I believe the clerk has something written for us.
Okay, so I have a motion to defer, moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Doherty. At Clause Two, Subclause One of Report Number Three from Heritage Kingston, application for permit 85 Sidnum Street be deferred back to staff so that new information submitted by the applicant can be reviewed, and so that staff can retain a heritage expert to assess the windows. Counselor Osterhoff, motion defers on the floor. You have up to one minute to speak to it, and again, that's to time, place, or purpose.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just one point of clarification there that I've discussed with the clerk. And I don't know if we can add that to it, was to the next council meeting, because of a time, a time issue related to the file. And maybe we can ask Madam Clerk if that could be on there for the December 21 council meeting.
So, so Counselor Osterhoff, so the issue there is that, because your motion to defer is asking for refer back to staff to consider new information, it's probably difficult to pin down exactly what that could be. It's not as simple as just disagreeing at that time.
Yeah, we can, we can probably run with that. And if it comes back on the 21st, then if not, there might be an agreement. So just to brief counsel a little bit, Counselor Doherty and I are on Heritage, and this file did come forward. And I personally don't know a lot about this file, but I do know that this particular application had some issues related to windows. And so I just can comment that I know that windows are an important aspect of the historical perspective. This particular file, there is a considerable debate and lack of alignment. A deferral will give the applicant some time to present new A deferral will give the applicant some time to present new information and data to Heritage. And so I believe that this is an honest and a fair request, and I'm hopeful that we can support it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Doherty?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question to staff. There, there were a few iterations of this deferral, and at one stage, it did include the Heritage Committee. So I just wonder would staff also, I guess we go and take a look at all the, the window policies, but would there be any kind of reach out with Heritage Committee members, or could they reach out to you while this process is taking place?
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, and through you, and thank you for that quest, that, thank you for that question, Counselor Dory. I'm sorry, the, the motion's all around the screen, so I can't speak to it directly. But we had understood the process to be, to bring this back to Heritage Kingston. It would be at the December 15:00 meeting, which would be Heritage Kingston's opportunity. This is a part five application, so Heritage Kingston would only have the opportunity to support or not the recommendation that would be brought forward as it did at the previous meeting. And then that report would come back to council potentially on December 21:00. I think it's also important to note on the file that the 90-day requirement for the processing and decision on this file will expire on January 2:00, 2022. And also, at this time, staff have not received any updated information from the applicant. We're not suggesting that couldn't be forthcoming, but we've not had opportunity to assess it. And also, the, the aspect of the motion that speaks to staff pursuing an additional assessment of the windows. We do think that that could be somewhat problematic, given the timeline around moving this for the December 15:00 meeting and then on to council for 21:00. And also, we'd like to point out that in the report, there is, there are two assessments provided by Heritage specialists, one of which did speak to the, the potential for the repair of the windows quite successfully. So it is a complicated file, as Counselor Osterhoff has noted, but I just wanted to share with council as well staff's considerations of those timeline impacts in the motion as presented.
Thank you for that. That was very helpful.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion to defer? Counselor Strad?
Yes. I, I have looked into this matter, and I also know that similar situations came up a few times while I was chair of Heritage for those four years last term. So I'll start out with a question from staff. So this is a part, you've said it's part five application. So, so just to walk counsel through this. So the applicant wanted to make an alteration to his heritage property, the 85 Sidnum Street, it's a heritage building. It's in a heritage district, so it's not, yes, the building was originally designated, but it's now part of a heritage conservation district. So all of, all alterations in the Heritage District, which is Old Sidnum, go to the committee and, yes or no? Sorry, what did you say, your worship?
I was just giving you your time. You've only had fifteen seconds.
How long do I get to speak to?
You have one minute to speak to your motion to defer. You spoke for three, five seconds.
Okay, well, the question to staff is what happens when the 90 days on a part five application expires?
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, and through you. When the 90 days on a part five motion, which, sorry, a part five approval request expires, then it would be essentially an approval of the application by default, the application as submitted by the applicant. So if on January 2nd, council has not made a decision and we've not provided notice to the applicant, then as of January 2, their application is essentially approved as submitted because it was not processed within the 90-day timeline.
Okay, I would just finish by saying that there's a real chance that this deferral will actually approve the application that was contrary to staff's recommendation, which was repair, not replacement.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the motion to defer? Okay, we will, yes, Counselor Hutchinson, one minute to speak to the motion to defer.
Could I get some further explanation from staff as to Counselor Strad's comment there? Because are we put in a position here where the timing will inadvertently approve something that staff did not agree with?
So, Ms. Campbell, can you just go over that one more time for counsel, please?
So as we understand the motion before council presently, staff would be asked to receive new information from the applicant. And additionally, right now, the motion does consider or suggest that staff would retain an additional assessment of the windows. Staff do have concerns about the timeline to achieve that in service to the December 15:00 Heritage Kingston meeting. If staff did have an update to the recommendation that was fed by that new information, could bring it to the December 15:00 Heritage Kingston meeting, it would then come to council on December 21:00. And if council were to make a decision that evening, we would satisfy the timeline of January 2:00, 2022.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the motion to defer? Okay, we will call the vote then. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Okay. So that's everything from report number three on to report number four from the nominations advisory committee.
Moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that report number four from the nominations advisory committee be received and adopted.
There is just the one clause, public appointments to boards and working groups. So for the appeals committee, Robert Knox, Todd Storms, and Hillary Wallace, Heritage Kingston, Jelenka Burney, Kingston Area Tax Commission, Joseph Abreu, Diane Aziz, Mary Renee Azion, Joseph Pousser, Stephen Fraser, Kingston-Frognac Housing Board, Liz Shell, and Mohammed Youssef, Kingston-Frognac Public Library Board, Pavna Varma, and Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, Maxine Bridges, Shanti Bozinski, Amy Birch, Kay Leclair, Corey Scott, Nicholas Lutessi, and Janice Wood. We will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to report number five from the Integrity Commissioner Selection Panel.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Holland, that report number five from the Integrity Commissioner Selection Panel be received and adopted.
So there's the one clause, a word of contract integrity commission. Discussion? Okay. We will call the votes, then. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by a vote of ten to two. Okay. We have nothing for committee of the whole information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand. First question, third crossing, quarterly update Q4 2021. Okay, we have no information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business. So first, number one, moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Counselor Bohm. The following counselors have indicated they're willing to serve as deputy mayor for two months. Counselor Neal, Counselor Hill, and Counselor Kylie. So we will be drawing names, but before we do that, is there anybody else that wishes to put their name into the hat? If we had two more volunteers, we would actually get to the end of the council term. Just throwing that in there. No other volunteers? Counselor Osterhoff? And Counselor Holland, okay. And then Counselor Chappelle? Okay, well, now we have a problem. Hold on one second.
I'm, I'm happy to do so. I don't know that, I mean, is there any issue if Counselor Chappelle's currently deputy mayor? If he does it another time? It doesn't matter to me.
Okay, so, so because, so Counselor Chappelle's deputy mayor term was decided the last, in the last round, or the last ask. So, so now we're looking for deputy mayor appointments starting February of 2022. So there are basically five slots to the end of term, but I'm sure that we can do, we can do a vote, you know, for whoever might be interested in doing that. So, so right now, Counselor Kylie?
Mayor Patterson, I can drop my name, and that makes it just five for five.
Okay, whatever people would like to do. There, there's no issue with doing, I shouldn't have said it was a problem. It's not a problem. We can do a council vote. I don't want to exclude, I didn't mean to exclude or discourage anybody there. Counselor Kylie, is that what you prefer to do?
Yeah. I, no, just drop me. That's fine.
Just drop me. So what we would have then is we have Counselor Neal, Counselor Hill, Counselor Osterhoff, Counselor Holland, and Counselor Chappelle. Okay, and so we will now, I will now ask the deputy mayor to draw names for commitments starting in February.
The first name is Counselor Holland. That will be February and March. Next, we have Counselor Osterhoff, April and May. Next is Counselor Hill for June and July. Followed by Counselor Neal for August and September. And Counselor Chappelle, October and November.
So our convention is that we will, we will devote our next, so that gives, gives everyone two weeks if you wish to trade for the two-month periods. And then we'll look to confirm at our next council meeting on the front. Okay, number two, moved by Council McLaren, seconded by Council Hill, that the resignation of Glenn Chadwick from the Citizens Committee to Review Council Remuneration be received with regret. Number three, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that the resignation of Kersey Hunako from the Arts Advisory Committee be received with regret. So we will call the vote then. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to new motions. We have one new motion this evening, moved by Deputy Mayor Chappelle, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. Whereas 2274 Princess Street, Inc. have submitted an application, excuse me, an application for official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for the property known as 2274 Princess Street. Whereas the delegation of authority by law allows for council to bump up applications to plan. Therefore, be resolved that the application for site plan control approval from 2274 Princess Street, Inc. for the property known as 2274 Princess Street, outlined in record number D35-007-2020, be bumped up to the planning committee. Deputy Mayor Chappelle, you have the floor. If there's any comments you want.
Thank you, worship. I, I've just asked my colleagues to support this motion. There's been a lot of civic engagement and concerns with the community neighboring this proposal. And this is just an opportunity to ensure that some of their concerns are further mitigated as we move forward in the proposal. So, you know, I just ask for your consideration for the residents in this, in my district. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote then on new motion number one. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Madam?
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that the minutes of special city council meeting number 25-2021 held Tuesday, November 9, 2021, and city council meeting number 26-2021 held Tuesday, November 16, and Wednesday, November 17, 2021 be confirmed.
Opposed? Opposed? And that's carried. It's in handling documents, number communications. Is there any other business? Deputy clerk, I will ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that bylaws one through three and five be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that clause 12.63 of bylaw number 2021-41 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws one and three free reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that bylaws one and three through five be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counsel Neal, seconded by Counsel McLaren. All those in favor? And then carries. We're adjourned.